I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under the approval of the agenda, we've been received, we have received some budget amendments to add to our agenda, budget amendment, Fund 141, number 15. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda with this addition?
Is that under first reading or second reading?
It's a budget amendment. It's just, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said policy. Did I say, did I say policy? Okay, budget amendment, Fund 141, number 15, add to our agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve? Thank you, Mr. Jordan, again, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Zander. All those in favor, please raise your right hand, and the motion passes unanimously. I believe on the recognition...
We had some of those that are not able to be with us because they fell overnight in the weekend, traffic, and some others physically have issues, so we just totally had all week appreciated all the recognitions.
I've always liked to recognize Mayor Potts, thank you for coming, Commissioner Edna Langley, I don't know if you all have, but Edna, she did a tremendous job at county commission meeting, her presentation on our efforts at Jefferson Elementary just went above, we really appreciate it, great, great advocacy. All right, we've been over the director's report, the monthly financial report, Mr. Potts, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, just a couple of comments. Back a month or so ago, I gave an update on the economic condition of the county, two, three updates to that, I looked at last month's local sales tax before it came over, 20% above last year, so the continued significant increase over last year continues, so we're at 20% from the month, 20% here today, that will obviously help our role for the end of the year. Other thing is adequate facility tax is up over 40% this year over last year, so the growth in the building in Jefferson County is significant right now, adequate facilities goes to pay for school debt. I have one more, I just escaped, but things continue to be good from an economic standpoint in the county, and all expenses when you look at your financial, we're at or below budget levels except for a couple of budget amendments we want to talk about in a few minutes, and those don't affect the fund balance, it's just moving from one place to the other, so looking good. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potts. All right, moving on to the consent agenda items, do I hear a motion to approve? How many we, seven, is there a second? Thank you, Senator, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, and the motion carries unanimously. Committee reports, we have the policies committee, there's nothing on first reading, but recommendation for second reading. I guess I just hit the second. Do I hear a motion to approve? I got it. These policies on second reading? Thank you, Mr. Jordan, again, is there a second? That's Mr. Martin. That's a favor, please raise your right hand, and the motion carries unanimously. Education committee report? Right, it's a new committee. Under our budget amendments, we have general purpose fund 141, amendment 14, federal purpose fund 142, amendment 12, food service fund 143, amendment four, and the one we added, general purpose fund 141, amendment 15, I'm going to add that right there. So we would be approving four budget amendments.
I'm going to approve four budget amendments that I presented.
Senator, is there a second? Thank you, Senator.
Yeah.
Yes?
142, amendment 12, way, about $37, $3.7 million. What do you say that's worth?
What, what, what?
Is that what says building construction, is that the roof?
Okay.
I couldn't hear the question, but that's S for two, is that the one you're asking about?
Yes, yes.
These are just the major categories that we put that in.
Correct.
So back a month ago, when we had Esra, Tommy has to apply what's called E-Plan, which is out in the clouds, you understand that world, for the money, this is not real money, so to speak, so you all approve technology, transportation, academics, and renovation. All this does is put that in the lines, our local, Mr. Potts' budgets, with the computer world at the state, and put them in that budget, that's all it does.
Okay. So how would we allocate the roof?
It's in there, under renovations, well, this is all, everybody understands, and this is a problem we've talked about, the mayor will face this as well some, that's why we're trying to hurry and spend the money, it's like Canada, we, we spend the money, and they reimburse us and draw it down, and the county has a $1 million limit, so we have to balance our expenditures to where we don't hit that million dollars, in other words, we've got to borrow money from ourselves, basically, you can say it better, I can't miss, but...
On the federal side.
On the federal, 142.
You can't spend more than you have, and there's a $1 million loan from your general fund to your federal fund, you can never spend more than that at any given time.
So if we got in a renovation project of some nature, he's already done the legwork on this, we're not going to ride ages, you're not going to spend off $10 million at one time, it's going to be paced down as projects are completed, is that a fair way to say that?
And we're probably going to come back here in the next couple of months and ask for that to be extended to $2 million, because of the size of these grants and the law part.
In addition to the grants, we still haven't operated the normal day-to-day 142 stuff, which is all sorts of federal programs that Tommy also...
It's simply to create the cash to be able to spend the money, because we can't get reimbursed until we spend it, it's just managing the cash flow, it's not an expense.
But are you able to, say we want to do this roof project that's going to cost a total of $3.6 million, can you, how do you go about doing that?
Well, that's what, Mr. Dr. Arnold and I will have to look at our cash flow to make sure that at any particular time, we don't have more than $2.5 million at a time, or a million today.
So we would have to work it out with contractors, you need to bill us as you go.
Exactly.
So we'll end up with a $3.6 million...
On our job, that was $200, say, $250,000, so they billed us for 30% completion, 75% completion, and then they billed us for final payment, so within those time periods, we would be able to take the first payment of $100,000, pay that, submit it for reimbursement from Edison, and they would send us a check back in seven to 10 days, and then we'd have that money to spend again.
We will manage that, okay, and that time comes, if you approve these projects, we'll come back and say $2 million will do it, or the million we've got today, which one, because it's $2 million, but we'll come back and do that, y'all shouldn't be concerned about it, it doesn't cost you...
I know, but I want to add one more question. Is the million dollars county-wide or just for schools?
It's the schools, the federal side's borrowing it from the general side, both of it's schools, so we're just moving the cash over to another fund, federal fund, while this, the number used to be half a million, and then the grants have gone up, so we moved it to a million, but it doesn't, it's not an expense to just move the cash from one place to another, to help cash flow.
Thanks, your question is true.
The best part about that is that we will manage this, we know how.
Well, sometimes it gets difficult, I mean, we got down to where, you know, nervous.
No, I mean, we've been tired a time or two, Ms. Joyce, the committee, she helps us, us all keep her...
Yeah, when we said "we," we should have, because she's the one that watches the clock. Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
The third thing that I forgot to tell you about, unemployment for February dropped to 5.1%, and for Jefferson County, that's below the five-year average.
Okay, back to budget amendments, are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of four budget amendments, please raise your right hand, and the motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is resolution number 202179, Transportation Department, do I hear a motion to approve this resolution? Thank you, Mr. Jordan, again, is there a second? Thank you, Senator, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, the motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is the TNRNT election of trustee.
I didn't really understand that, Madam Chair, when I read, tried to, does that, are we asking us to nominate Dr. Johnston?
He's not there.
Well, I know you're not, but everybody on there was a director of schools, so, I mean, I didn't really understand what I was reading, so can you explain to me what I was reading?
Well, it's the first time I'm seeing it, but I think it's, we can nominate somebody out of our district if we want, or our region, but...
Mr. Potts, this is Tennessee Risk Management, it's their trustee nomination form, is that something that you normally see?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I put that in the package, just so that you all would be aware, that as members of the Tennessee Risk Management Trust, you have the opportunity to have somebody, we have several fires burning, and I will speak on behalf of Michelle Simcox, District 1, Danny Weeks, I know both those District 6 directors very, very well, and if we had an issue that we wanted to talk to Tennessee Risk, those are both on speed dial that I can talk to, so I feel like we would have a voice to take to some of these people we know, if you wanted to leave that alone, but it's, whatever y'all want to do.
I don't want to add any more to your flag, we're going to build a school. All right, moving on, FFA Division, unfinished business, I believe we talked at the work session, that we're going to come back in May, that we'll just add this to our May agenda, is that agreeable with everybody? Is that agreeable, Coach?
Yes.
Be quiet, have I not been paying any attention? All right, can you hear me? Okay, next, capital projects, Jefferson Elementary School, I guess we all know what happened at the county commission meeting, one good thing, it was positive, they're putting it back on their April agenda, that's good for us, community's gotten a little bit more fired up about it, I think. All right, moving on, Piedmont, anything that we need to do, what can we have by our May meeting?
So we've been talking, and you all can back me up, we feel like we can renovate this school for less money than building this school. We feel like, based on the condition of certain portions of the school, what needs to be done, of course, we need to do further investigation and tighten up on our numbers and how we're going to do it, but we feel like we can renovate this school for less money than a new school would cost you, and it would turn out to be like a new school. Assuming that we're not adding on, expanding. Y'all back me up?
Absolutely.
Well, that's the motion that's on the floor.
Do we need to address the money that's available to be used to raise the town?
As I shared earlier in the week, I think, I think if the board wanted to commit funds to at least show the direction they're going, that may be better than just when we ask questions later this month, and even say the board talked about it, all I mean is by commit, we're not going to spend it or commit anything other than, I think the questions will come in about stimulus money, what's the board's plan for that, and if you had some funds committed, one way or the other, it plays with the board, at least then the answer's not, well, they talked about it, right now, it sounds like the answer could also be the board's asking these two different organizations to come back with more information, they're waiting to commit from then, and that's a pleasure of the board.
Will we be meeting again before the county commissioners' meeting?
Only if you call them.
I attended the meeting, and the influence I got from the meeting, some of them are concerned, and I say some of them, our commissioners are concerned, that we as a board will come back and ask for more money to remodel or to do ways to be done Piedmont, so, you know, I hope I've done the right thing, but I'd like to make a motion that we allocate aside $15 million of stimulus money to be used for the remodeling of Piedmont or the building of and use of the material as the board decides. I hope I've done the right thing, and I hope I'm saying the right thing, but, you know, setting aside $15 million is a lot of money, and I personally don't believe it takes that much to remodel Piedmont, do you, Dr. Chan?
No.
And I'm not saying $15 million for y'all to come back and say $14 million will buy one Piedmont, that's just funny that we are setting aside to be used for the modeling of Piedmont.
We feel like more investigation, we feel like we can do it for less than...
Yeah, wait, wait, can I get a second first?
What would the second be, or?
For the motion to set aside $15 million to renovate or build new Piedmont Elementary School.
I would second to...
For discussion purposes. All right, now, Mr. Bill. Mr. Martin, you got anything?
If I were county commissioner, I would have a big problem that you're willing to spend $15 million to renovate this school, but you're not willing to spend $16 million to renovate Jefferson Elementary.
I'm just going to say, I think, I encourage the motion to just leave it to all of setting aside a pocket of money before it gets used somewhere else, you're not committing to that.
No.
Oh, okay.
That is funding that we have to do.
I think if they come back with $14 million to renovate this school, we're broken to say...
We're going to say no. Fire us. If we set $15 million aside for this project, and it comes up $8 million or $12 million, and we set aside $15 million, can we take the other $3 million and put on the Jefferson Elementary School, looking forward to it, I mean, I've thought all that, I'm...
Well, there's all kinds of ways to structure funding, you know, they're just, who knows? It depends on how much money we get from county commission, it could be that we'd be able to use the balance of the money on 15 to do roofs, to do HBOC, we've done a lot of expenses, I don't think it's going to be, I don't, I think we have plenty of expenses, it's the timing of spending it, but I think there is a way also to maybe get that to work, if the county will, the county commission will fund Jefferson Elementary School.
I would agree with Ms. Robbie 100%, I, as a commissioner, I wouldn't vote to spend $15 million here, and $17 million here, I wouldn't do, but we're not, we're just setting this money aside to be used for...
No more base statements coming in?
I think we're doing it too early, Bill, we don't, we don't have enough information yet to set money aside, I think if you want to say, let's set money aside to alleviate the problems of Piedmont, but not put a figure, I just think we...
If we don't set it aside, then what happens to Dr. Chan?
I mean, it's out there in the clouds right now, so we do have, we do have timelines, you're pressed to spend the first day this month, so I think you...
And at length, ten.
Esra 1 has to be spent by June 30 next year.
So we have one year.
Esra 2 is in June of the next year, and Esra 3 is June of the next year, however, that sounds like that's way far down the road, but if they break around today, that's a tight schedule to get a heavy renovation done or a new construction. Does that make sense?
We still got, they still got to design.
Yeah.
What can we do?
So you're in, you're within a timeframe window, but you don't have, again, I think the intent of what you're trying to say here, Mr. Jordan, is just we're going to set that money aside before others decide they know how we need to spend, or this body needs to do. But you're not committing to spend it.
I'm not committing to spend on Piedmont, I'm just setting it aside to be used.
Put ring to my shoes, please. The motion is to set aside $15 million, Esra 3, I should clarify, and to be used to renovate and/or build new for Piedmont Elementary School, is that correct?
Take a combo of two, Esra 3, take a combo of something, two and three, Esra 2 and three.
Oh, there's not, okay, because it's only 14, so... Two and three, okay.
I'm making this comment with the hopes that the county commissioners can see that we won't be coming back asking for another $20 million to renovate or to build Piedmont School, that's one of my reasons, because I, I don't say...
You think you got it, ma'am? You think you got it right?
Well, I'm not going to...
Well, basically, you're saying you're not going to have to fund Piedmont at all.
That's what we're saying to their commissioners.
So, that's what we're saying. But, that means we've got to get the numbers in quickly, because it is, if it is last, then the 14, we've got to come up with other projects spending on quickly, we just have a lot of roofs, and we're just going to take care of them. Anything else?
Just clarifications, as I understand the motion, if the board approves that or says that there would not be anything spent for reassurance purposes to that money until they came back and made the presentation, and then the board decides whatever they present, or send them back to the drawing board.
So, in charge of it?
That's the way I'd like to think.
So, is it my understanding that you had to spend the money within a certain amount of time, and you're not sure, you're not, you had to commit anything, that the project couldn't be done that quickly, the whole thing, so could you prioritize the immediate needs to spend the most of the money immediately? Does that make sense, do you see what I'm trying to say?
I think we need to sit down with Dr. Johnston, figure out that cash that's been down on the front door, and try to align with the schedule, because you've got to pay people to design, so you're, it could be spending that money even before you got to control.
I don't, I have confidence that we can finish by June 23, I'm sorry, June of 24, with whatever they bring back in this body approves, for two reasons, one is, what we can't do is wait for January and then try to start doing a major project, that's all I'm saying. Now, Mr. Potts and I have talked about it, and Tommy, and we are working through the budget, we're looking for ways that, are there things we can buy out of Esra funds that normally we buy out of the operating in case we run over the June deadline, so I mean, we're going to spend, in fact, we're going to spend Washington's money first, but that's all, like you said, we will handle that, we're going to make sure we spend money before we lose it, in case we run long, but I'm confident whatever the board was, would decide to be done by June of 24, as long as we don't wait till June of 22 to start, and that's just a date type of...
All right, any other comments about the motion on the floor? And the motion is to set aside $15 million from Esra 2 and Esra 3 funds to be used to either renovate or build new for Piedmont Elementary. All those in favor, you have to say it.
My second motion goes to renovate, not to build.
Not build, you had build in the stand, did you, Tom?
Yeah, build.
But if you'll take that out, fine, I'll consider it.
It's up to you, you made the motion.
Take it out.
All right, so it's to renovate, not build, all right, so the motion has been changed to set aside Esra, about $15 million from Esra 2 and Esra 3 to be used to renovate Piedmont Elementary School, correct? Both of you? Can you, did you hear me? Okay, any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please raise your right hand, all those opposed, and the motion passes five one. Do you not have questions? Of this Esra 2 money where we allocated $3.7 for construction, do we need to specify a project?
I mean, you would either need to specify, so, again, this is a different topic, keep straight, when you put it in four buckets, of Esra 2, really what you're doing now is coming back saying we're going to pour Esra 2 and Esra 3 in the same pocket, which is at some point in time what we have to do, and then that's, we would not spend any of that without coming back to the board and saying, here's what we're spending that on. Uh, so, you've already allocated in the budget amendment, Tommy, what was tonight's budget amendment in renovation?
$3.7. Seven, $3.7, is it $3.7?
I think it's $3.7. I'm just verifying.
But there's also architectural fees, consultants, construction manager, so there's $4 million in building, capital project.
So, if the board wants, yes, we would feel better if the board guided us. We just put it in, we just moved it from the state bank to our right pocket, waiting for y'all to get it guys. On those red roofs, as an example. We're not gonna arbitrarily pick what projects do, we'd be able to guide it.
So, along that, on that, uh, we're also bidding out some of those red roofs and total loans. And some of that work needs to be done in the summertime, if possible, whenever we're tearing off roofs, if, if there's money available for them. So, we are prepared to move this summer on some schools to do the red roof sections if money's available.
Now, are you talking about the six schools that you showed?
Yes.
All of the six?
Not all of them. So, we're, we're ready to move on, uh, three of those schools. There again, allow cash flow, and then some more in the fall, if possible. So, roofs continue to move in that direction.
So, the budget amendment authorized, not authorizing renovation. We're ready to move if the board wants us to spend that money you've allocated into renovation for roofs. We're ready to roll on that out of Esra 2. But we would pace ourselves out, so we didn't hit that $1 million or $2 million.
Summer, fall, spring, correct.
Well, I'd like to make the motion that we do that, that we use the Esra 2, how many is, it was, uh?
$3.7.
$3.7 plus $500,000, what is it? Well, the $3.7, but it's, you said it's gonna take more than that?
It would not take all of that to get us through the next year's work. I would not be able to spend all of that in a year.
For the six roofs?
Well, I, what I'm saying is, I couldn't stay within my, uh, allotted amount, and I don't wanna tear off a roof while kids are inside the building.
Sure, I understand.
So, what I would do is manage tear-offs during the summer and refurbishment, like at Danbridge during the school, uh, and then come back again next summer and complete that work. So, 14, 16 months to spend, probably around $3 million on roofs. Three, $3.6, whatever that was. That's what I need to.
$600,000 for mine, though.
So, it's a, well, I don't know. Mr. Potts, do we need a motion to just find the project, or once it's already in the budget, they, to spend it the way they think it needs to be spent?
Technically, the front answer's probably, we don't need a motion, but what we've set precedent here in the last few years is any of these county projects, too, often, totally may be in the budget. I already had your, that's a fair.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna spend $3.6 billion, we would want score in the inspection yard, I wanna go. If we're gonna spend $3, we want it to be in the direction.
That's correct.
All right, then I'm gonna finish my motion. Use the Esra 2, uh, $3.7 million for roofs with the remaining balance, if there is any, brought back and will be designated. All right, so the motion is to use the Esra 2, $3.7 million for, uh, the six roofs with, uh, the balance to be returned. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan, again. We've been talking about roofs for a long time, and we need to allocate some money, so that's why I wanted to get on with it, so you can, if, if, anybody have any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. And the motion passed unanimously. I just have a quick question. Out of the, uh, capital projects that we have allocated money for, um, in May, can you update what's been completed and what's still outstanding to be completed?
I'm pretty one, I'm pretty two. Maybe if I may, give you a glimpse of what we were bringing the board for consideration for, I'm pretty three. And on that, we can tell you the, uh, security entrances at New Market, Russian wrong, it's, it's walled off and cheap robbed. Uh, progress is made today. Do what?
State Farm marshal was on-site to file a report the other day, and noted it as being 50% complete.
Great, and New Market demo occurred yesterday, and I'm sure.